Dear Redding. Hey, Dear Redding. Hey, hey, Dear Redding. Hey, 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 Dear Redding. Dear Redding.
Dear Redding.
Dear Redding.
Dear Redding.
Dear Redding, we never gonna stop, we all gonna win, we going to the top, we all gonna shine, we all gonna pop, we all about to make it cuz the grind don't stop. Hey, hey, hey. Coronavirus?
Coronavirus.
Alright, Bree, you good on your sound?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Alright, everybody good?
We live.
I should've did a like video test cuz the light is right above my head and it's like.
You know that joke about the, you see that shit reflecting right in your background?
You mean right? Oh shit.
I was saying, let me check my glasses again.
You know what's crazy too, like, I didn't realize, I hadn't been posting like snaps of myself, so when somebody FaceTimes me, they're like, what the, like, they're so surprised, I'm like, I've had this for almost a month now, and it's like, well, I haven't posted a picture in like a month, so.
Yeah, man, you want your different time now.
Makes sense.
Cracking up. Alright, we ready?
Yes, we are.
Three, two, one, and welcome back to another episode of Dear Redding, this is episode sixty-two, uh, which is wild to think about, we really put that all together, um, so yeah, welcome back to another episode, last week, we talked about, uh, friendship breakups and got to interview Maximus, so shout out to him for the last episode, thank y'all all for letting us, listening and all that fun stuff, um, but we are back, so Dear Redding.
We back.
I am your host, Keith, Marquis D'Avon, This American Negro, This Dude and Dear Redding, One Fourth of the Team, what else we got, we got Miss Marie Sykes.
Gang, gang.
Lovely host. Miss Brianna Tyson. Lovely, lovely, Bree. Now we got, we got somebody new, we got somebody new in the chat.
You couldn't wait to get that joke on.
Not wait, not wait. We got a brand new D Will here. We will also be joined by our favorite alternative black Tyler Washington.
Chris is my favorite, but. I'm just saying, that's, I'm just saying, Chris is the, you know, more, I feel like he's more mature than Tyler, but that's.
That's not a question, no, that's not the question.
He is my favorite, he is my favorite.
Tyler's your favorite or Chris is your favorite?
Chris is my favorite. We dark skinned gotta stick together.
Chris is a dark skin.
What?
Me and Chris are the same shade. Like a mopa. Huh? I love Chris.
I think Bree's really confused.
I'm sorry, guys.
We're walking, we're gonna keep going through that.
I don't know why you guys try to play me.
Girl, you played yourself on that one. You were your colorblind.
Wow.
Different ways to support Dear Redding, so if you're interested, you can sign up for our Patreon, which is a, a more of a long-term commitment, you can do as little as two dollars, as much as like five hundred dollars, whatever you're feeling like, gifting Dear Redding, um, on the Patreon page, we do plan on having more exclusive content, so please be looking out for that, uh, but also non-monetary ways that you can donate to the podcast, you can like, subscribe, share this podcast, leave us rates and reviews on Apple Podcasts, teach somebody how to use a podcast, um, that is hella important, um, but yeah, little things, just tell people you're listening to us, make sure you screenshot, and then share with us on Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook, share with your aunties and uncles, your friends, lovers, and all that fun stuff, um, but also, the Patreon link to Dear Redding is patreon.com backslash Dear R D G, um, oh, if you're interested in signing up for that, please do go there. Other than that, now all the formalities are out the fucking way, y'all team, how's it going, how's y'all week?
Hectic.
You're hect, you said hectic?
Yeah, that's, yeah, they still got, I'm apparently an essential worker, which is bullshit, I don't do anything essential, but they still got me working, I'm hating on the people who can collect unemployment, because eventually, they're gonna be making more than I do, to sit on their ass at home. I'm hating, do y'all thing, make y'all monies, while I over here, work for the white man.
It's gonna get better.
Is it really, Marquis?
Alright, honestly, I don't know, um, hopefully it gets better.
Supposed to say, yeah.
Yeah, 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 totally, yeah, 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 yeah. So, Bree. How you doing, Bree?
I'm, 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 I'm okay, I guess, yeah, I'm good, I've, um, started working from home, so I don't have to go outside, but it's made me a little stir-crazy, because I don't have to go outside, still considered essential, like, D Will, but, um, yeah, I got everything set up from home, so luckily, I don't have to like go outside and touch like, keep it, people who don't know how to wash their hands. Just saying.
Marie?
Um, I'm okay, I'm, I'm an essential worker, and I actually do have to go to fuck outside, and go to my job, and I've been helping out ICU, and it's a hot-ass mess, um, yeah, I mean, there's, the only good news is we're discharging a lot of COVID patients, then we are admitting them, but, Berks County went up twenty-three percent in COVID cases. So, there's that, um, yeah, huh, y'all niggas need to stay inside, I don't know what y'all doing, having birthday parties and shit.
Yeah, that's cool.
Had a virtual birthday party with my, um, with my baby cousin yesterday.
Oh, too sweet.
I watched somebody like, I guess, it was somebody's birthday or whatever, and they had like a whole birthday party, like, people were there and celebrating and shit, and I'm like, y'all are not taking, I don't think people are taking it serious enough, and I think it's because people don't work in healthcare, but like, we get one mask a week, guys, that doesn't fight COVID, that doesn't do anything, the mask is nothing, we can't take that mask off for twelve to eight or eight hours, I come home, things on my face and shit like that because of the mask, um, my patient died the other day, so it's like, it needs to be taken like, more seriously than what people are, are doing, like, they're turning like, all of the ICUs into COVID cases, cuz we're getting, like, we were discharging them, that means they're recovering, but, since it went up twenty-three percent, we, like, when I go back tomorrow to work, there's gonna be a lot more COVID, like, patients coming in. I'm not working with them right now, but I could be working with them and, and shit like that, and like, my brother's in the hospital, so there's a chance he could get it, cuz they had him on a COVID floor.
Right.
tested for it, so like, it needs to be taken a lot serious than like people are, so I was just pretty much stressed this entire week, like, they keep changing my hours because of, like, the need in the hospital, so sometimes I could be working, twelve to eight-thirty, or I could be working twelve hours, or I could be working seven to three-thirty, so, like, my sleep schedule's all fucked up, so, it's been a stressful week.
Nah, I feel you there, um, my uncle is in the hospital right now, I just found out, and so, he's like, had like internal bleeding, and, not really sure from what, but he like went into surgery, but they ended up like, there was a COVID patient that ended up on his floor, so they had to like move his entire floor, or move his room completely out of the way, um, so I'm thankful that like, he was moved safely, um, but I would just like, this is not the time for my uncle to have, wanna have internal bleeding, like, I said,
Right.
but, he is doing much better, they put him like, uh, medically induced coma the other day, and I was just like, god damn, what is going on? Um, but, he's breathing now, he had his ventilator and all that stuff, so he's feeling a lot more comfortable.
Wait, what's your uncle's name?
Nicholas Richards.
Think I was working, I think I, was he at Ring Hospital?
Most likely.
I think I probably saw him, cuz I've been working with Ben patients recently, so maybe, maybe that was him.
You might've interacted with him, if you, if he got a chipped tooth like mine, his, his is a little bit more together, it's only half of his tooth.
I started to make a joke too, I was gonna make a joke. He beat me to the punch.
We both had the same tooth, but he didn't crack both sides.
Mouth or anything, I'm not a dentist.
I mean, he had a metal later there now, so I mean, right.
I do wanna say that like, there's no cure for COVID, let's start there, so when people, when COVID patients get like, the COVID, they're only testing people for COVID, for like stats and stuff like that, to tell people how many cases are in there, and they're treating their symptoms, so if you come in with a fever, you get, like, positive for COVID, they're treating the fever, they're treating the cough, they're treating the headache, they're treating stuff like that, they're not treating COVID, cuz there's no cure. People think that you're getting tested, and they're gonna cure you of the COVID, there's no cure, so you're getting treated for your symptoms, so I just don't want people to be like, misconstrue anything.
So it's more management rather than curing?
Yeah, cuz you, there's no cure for the COVID, you have to cure the symptoms that you're getting.
Right. Good looking out, thank you for that health tip, Marie. Tyler, how was your week?
No, I'm definitely going stir-crazy, this has been, uh, stressful.
Captain Fever.
Yeah, uh, I think like Marie, um, overdue a trip, and this is, uh, it's kinda killing me, um, so I've been working, so, I've been doing some work, I have been denied unemployment, so I'm in the like, appeal process for that as well.
Wait, Tyler, you're a freelancer, right?
Yeah.
They have a new one for freelancer, they have the P U C that you can apply for.
Oh, yeah, Jazz is, Jazz is doing the same thing.
U C.
So, maybe you gotta prove for it, so you should definitely do it, because maybe, yeah.
I'm definitely gonna be on that, I was doing some work that took most of the week, it was supposed to take a day, and ended up taking most of the week, um, and then this week, I found out two family members have COVID, so, just, uh, working through that.
Sending all the positive energies to everybody, um, but yeah, to shift it just a little bit, um, we're ready for the random question of the week.
No matter how many times we do this, I always forget about it.
I hate him so much. He knows what's coming. Um, this question's simple though, what's your favorite dessert?
The potato pie, done.
I'm definitely a pineapple upside-down cake kinda guy.
Gross.
I do love me some pineapple.
Disgusting.
Okay, y'all are fucking rude.
And you're fucking disgusting.
You might be blocked from the circle, I'm about to mute you.
What's your favorite?
Keep the circle, it's okay.
What's your favorite? What is, y'all know what it is.
I do not know.
You don't know your favorite dessert?
No, I don't really like sweets like that anymore.
Oh, you're getting old, you, you turned twenty-six and got old.
Clearly.
Yeah, clearly. You're old, old people.
Clearly, I got back problems, ankle problems.
Dessert.
I'm old. I go to sleep at.
Like, definitely. Bruh, you don't have no favorite desserts, everybody has.
This dessert is wings and Jose Cuervo.
Boom. Yours is wings and eighteen-hundred, but I mean, what's the difference, really?
I might have to second that vote.
Upside-down cake.
Marie.
Wait, what did mine say?
Don't try to drag me, Marie.
I like.
Hold the coffin.
In the middle.
What'd you say?
Warm chocolate chip cookies with vanilla ice cream in the middle.
Ooh.
So, do you like make a sandwich, like a?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that sounds pretty good.
Three.
You still ain't come up?
Oh, so I'm trying to decide, because like, my top three desserts are probably whoopee pies.
Hell.
Oh, have you ever had?
I don't even know what a whoopee pie is.
Amish, like homemade, whoopee pies.
What is that?
Oh, next time I get it. Yes, like, amazing. Um.
What is it?
It's like a chocolate cake with like this like frosting filling sort of thing, you can get them at the farmer's market, but I get them from like, I get it from like an Amish family. This is like a black family connection, though, this isn't even like my white side of the family.
I know what it is, that's why I'm like, uh, what do I?
My, my dad grew up in East Lebanon, East Lebanon County, so like, he grew up with like Amish, like farms nearby, so this is why I like have the connection.
So, black Amish people exist?
They're adopted.
You guys see, look, that's a whoopee pie.
It is.
Oh, okay.
It probably had it before.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
So I assume they're white people type things.
You onto them, amazing, uh, cheesecake, love cheesecake.
Oh.
And, uh, apple dumplings.
You lost me on that, apple dumpling?
It sounded.
It's just like, imagine like getting a whole baked apple, cooked in like dough and cinnamon and molasses and stuff like that, just this warm thing, put some ice cream on it.
I, I could go for that right now.
Yeah, Pennsylvania Dutch desserts are just nuts.
Pennsylvania Dutch should be much.
Alright, uh, now we're gonna move on real quick, is there anybody you would like to give your roses to this week?
I wanna give my roses to everyone. Excuse me, McNugget, nobody's talking to you right now. Alright, so, I wanna give my roses to everyone in healthcare, because you guys do such an amazing job, and you guys are dealing with a lot of stress, like, from fake news to annoying patients, to annoying, um, people in general, cuz I feel like, it's just been so much, like, I feel like, people are really getting kinda like to their very ends, you know? And, yeah, I think the people who deserve the most credit, um, are the people in healthcare right now, so, you'll probably hear this for like the next couple weeks going forth, just heads up you guys, so y'all know y'all are in my, like, my biggest haters, but I'm probably gonna give my roses to healthcare workers, um, yeah, who wouldn't?
Marquis.
Marquis, hold on to smoke, okay?
So what we're not gonna do is do that, so, anybody else wanna give the roses to somebody?
I wanna give my roses to every essential worker right now, because it's hard, like, honestly, like, not traveling is really like fucking me mentally, and like, not doing what you love, because you can't, you can't go outside, you can't do it, that really fucks with like people mentally, so, everybody that's working, and they're essential, and they're going to work while everybody's at home, or getting paid more than, like, on unemployment and whatnot, you guys like matter, that, and it means something, especially cuz you're, especially like grocery workers and stuff like that, you deal with like fucking idiots. Every time I go to the grocery store, I'm angry, cuz niggas be touching their phone, then they sit there and they touch the fruit, they touch it, I be ready to fight.
I feel some type of way about that too, about like, what you do when you're out in the grocery stores, or wherever you go, cuz I barely go out, I go out for my beer, but even then, like, I don't pick up any beer, I want it, like, I'm like, just by myself, trying to stay away from everybody, and then I'll look, I'm like, that beer for sure, and then put it in my car, I'm not picking something up, putting it back, and I see people doing this all the time, and that's like, starts bothering me.
Yeah, it's pretty much, I pick up and I go.
Where they need, I drive around with their mask hanging, I'm just like.
Get it together, right? Fucking asshole.
Alright, future.
At all times, um, word, Dee, you got anybody?
Um, I'm gonna have the second or third, the essential workers, just everybody that has to come into contact with other people, and I think a lot of people are forgetting like, mailmen, UPS drivers, FedEx delivery guys too, because they have to come into contact with people, and that, you don't even know, the person's house that you're delivering to, they could be a COVID patient, they might not know, you know what I mean, unless they're the fuckers that just toss the package and run. Take that shit, fuck you, no roses for you.
Tyler, you got anybody?
Yeah, you know, just every, every creator out there that's like putting out content and going live, and doing stuff constantly for everybody, and trying to like, provide entertainment, um, and just kind of any type of sanity, you know, it's, this is really tough, and speaking from my own experience, you know, I've been going through my own, you know, uh, mental health issues with all of this, just kind of being stuck here and going through ups and downs, so it's, uh, people that are trying to make the situ, like, the dark situation a little brighter, I am definitely appreciative, appreciative of. Yeah.
Um, and then I guess for me, I really wanna give my roses to, uh, Glyph, um, just cuz he was recently, selected as a fellow to the Report for America Initiative by the Ground Trees Project, so I just wanna give that to him, cuz I was like, that's some kind of good news coming out of here, um, and yeah, just going to you, Anthony Roscoe, especially cuz this year, he became an independent writer and artist, so, it's nice to see him being able to fully.
Thrive.
Yeah, thrive and get his moment, um, so shout out to everybody there, so the essential workers, the UPS people, not the ones who be throwing the shit and be running and breaking your shit, um, but we got y'all, we appreciate y'all. Alright, so we gotta move smooth into Word on the Street, so Word on the Street is the segment where we basically each pick a piece of news and kind of just go through that, um, so there's a couple pieces of news that we got today, white people doing white people things, but then also black culture really thriving, um, and also under critique, as per usual, so, for the first piece of news, let's, do you wanna start with the white people mess, or do we wanna start with some cultural stuff?
The white people mess.
D Will, you brought us some news this week.
Um, yeah, I was just trying to get, pick y'all brains apart, uh, see how you guys feel about Trump's comments about, pretty much, and just paraphrase, injecting fucking disinfectant to, uh, cure COVID, um, he was, he, he was interviewed, and they asked him about it, and he said, I said this sarcastically, just to see what would happen, now, I was just wondering, like, how do you guys feel that the President of the United States, like, how do you feel that he can make these comments, and people will still try to justify it? Knowing like the position of power he holds?
I don't know how I feel, I, I just, it, it's the same as anything he's done in the past to me, I, I can't understand the justification behind it, um, literally going on social media and seeing tons of posts about do not drink, bleach, don't inject Lysol, like, if there would've been a Family Feud question about tweets you never thought you would see, now it would be number one on my list, don't, don't, ingest this, so it's, uh, it's been wild, that's just his presidency, though, it's just, it seems normal for him.
I agree with Tyler, that it's like, not, it's, it's really on the nose for, um, for this president, for Trump, like, this is the thing that you expect him to say, he's so very outlandish, um, it's, it's crazy that, you know, we do have American citizens that are actually, from what I've been, like, seeing on Twitter, there have been, um, people calling into the hospital, um, like, reports of people saying like, actually, should they do that, should they in freaking inject, uh, inject Lysol or disinfectant, um, into their veins, because the president said that, and I don't know if people are saying that because of it's like a, like as a joke or not, but being that we live in a country that people were eating Tide Pods, I'm sure that we're gonna see cases of people doing this now, and it's like, very troubling to me, because like, Marie, I have other, like, family members and friends who work in healthcare, so now you have, he's just thrown more of a, more things onto their shoulders, like, another burden, now, you know, you're gonna have someone that might take him serious and might do that, and I didn't hear the report, that he said that that was just him joking or being sarcastic, so if I was here, I'm sure that there were other people who didn't hear it as well, so it's just like, I can't wait for the primaries to come, um, yeah, I can't wait for us to get him out, because this is like, getting ridiculous, can you imagine another four years of this?
Do you think he's gonna get out?
I hope, I, I hope, but who's to say? Your guess is as good as mine.
I'm very pessimistic at this point, um, but I mean, I think recently I saw poll numbers that said there are still white people that are moving towards Joe Biden, because they are a lot more comfortable with him, um, but I still don't think that those white people are really gonna move the needle, because they'll still protect Trump no matter what, if it's anything like, as soon as I saw the comment from that, um, fuck ass, what's her name, Kayleigh McEnany, the new White House correspondent, she basically said like, leave the, leave it to the media to irresponsibly take Trump's, uh, Trump out of context and ru, out of context and run with negative headlines, only for him to pull that bullshit of saying like, I was just being sarcastic, so there's clearly like, this is Trump going off the thing, somebody trying to clean his mess, them still not being able to clean that mess, and not having any solid directions, because you know fuck ass idiots, like, if Lysol, we had to tell people and plead people not to do this, because if you take this, you're gonna have irregular heartbeat, like, that's wild to me, so, this is just like, seeing the anti-intellectual movement in like full force in my beginning, and people just really love to be dumb, white people love to be dumb, actually, Chris, I know you're out there.
You know, most other, uh, I think other years in terms of presidential candidacies and, uh, primaries, you can definitely take a look at poll numbers, but especially with this, presidency and this candidate, you know, you gotta be kind of cautious about this, because we, we all felt comfortable with the poll numbers going into the election last year, so, I don't know.
Any other comments on that topic?
I think you guys covered it all, like, if, I don't know, it's, it's, I'm, I'm not surprised, cuz there was niggas, I mean, maybe it's just Florida, cuz niggas in Florida were just.
Florida doesn't count.
California's nice, because them niggas was out on the beach.
But no, that's like, Florida, like, like, they're, like, Florida is a whole nother, they didn't close their beach until like, oh, last week, and then they reopen their beaches, like, in one week. Florida does their own thing, so like, we, we, we don't count them.
Right.
But if you think about all the people protesting for a haircut, those are the same people that are gonna inject themselves with Lysol, if you think about it, cuz those are the Trump supporters, those are.
Natural selection.
That's all that is, which is a beautiful segue into my topic about white people protesting. Nah, it's, it's wild, so I'll do a quick like, joke about it, but basically, uh, it said, last weekend, this is a Vox article, last weekend, thousands gathered in Washington, Michigan, Texas, Maryland, and California to protest lockdown orders resulting from the coronavirus pandemic. Some marched with rifles draped across their backs and handguns resting on their hips, while others shared conspiracy theories about Bill Gates and his involvement in the COVID-nineteen vaccine. And a lot of people wearing Trump twenty-twenty flags as well, um, so first and foremost, we obviously, like, for me, like, off rip, this, I'm like, lying. I'm mad, um, off rip, it's already just showing me like, one, these white people are really gathering in droves with their guns willy-nilly, um, and that's kinda wild to me. But I think the part that bothers me the most is definitely the fact that a lot of them are protesting right in front of healthcare facilities, um, which is very dumb, so, that's just like, my quickie on that, but it, this is like the peak demonstration of like, America reinforcing that white people don't know how to take no for an answer.
Idiocracy.
It's just, uh, watching like the stuff in front of Harrisburg, like Capitol, was kind of nuts, especially again, the guns, I think, bothered me the most, because it's just like, you get a group of black people that protest without weapons, and you get all this backlash on it, and just, just eager towards it, and then you get these people out there with like assault weapons, and it's just like, well, this is their American right, and there's, like, everything I heard to defend them kind of bothered me, um, and just even, there was a meme out there, it was like, it was at this moment that Republicans became pro-choice, because they had signs that said like, my body, my choice, and like, you know, in terms of being able to go outside, so it's, uh, it was very interesting to, to see the photos that came out of this, and just to see who, who was out there, um, crazy, stupid.
I think it's disrespectful, honestly, the whole protesting is disrespectful, and seeing the nurses go out there and protest against them, but there's like, there's so many nurses that are passing away from the COVID, and there's like, there's so many people passing away, period, so I think it's like disrespectful for the, the whites to go out there and protest for a haircut, for their small business, I like, I get it, everybody's going through like some type of hardship, that's understandable, but would you rather go through a hardship or still have your life? And there's people that are working frontlines, like we just talked about, that are trying to make sure that everybody can go out there and still have, maybe a summer or the rest of the year, or next year, or whatever the case may be, and save you, and people are protesting for a haircut, like, I, I, I honestly, working in healthcare, it didn't show me like how disrespectful it is, cuz you don't, like, some people, some doctors are quarantining themselves from the rest of their families, cuz they don't wanna give it to their families, and for you to go out there and protest over a motherfucking haircut, like, you can go. Because they don't want to give it to their families. And for you to go out there and protest over a motherfucking haircut, like you can got me fucked up, like. Harrisburg, whatever, knowing you're not even six feet away from each other and stuff like that. And it's, and it's just as disrespectful as people hanging out with their friends. And celebrating and birthday parties or whatever with their friends. It's, that is just as disrespectful to me.
I would have to agree with both Tyler and Marie. I think it's super disrespectful to like, especially that birthday comment you just made. Like I, I seen, was it yesterday or like two days ago? I seen like a, a group of people, actually like every weekend. I see like a big group of people, everybody drinking from the bottle, taking shots and shit like, yeah, that's cool. But at this time, like. Y'all really can hold off. Like, you know what I mean? You can do some shit like this. Like if you want to play some drinking games, you could do it like this.
Last night.
I want to know, yeah, I want to know how that goes. But, but as for the people protesting for a fucking haircut, guys. It is not that serious. But no, seriously, like it's super disrespectful because there are people dying, you know what I mean? Um, whether you think the, the, this pandemic is serious or not, I mean, I think you should respect the fact that. Businesses are closing. They're closed. They're staying closed until, you know, the numbers drop. And with you guys not remaining six feet, not following the social distancing guidelines. You guys are contributing to those numbers. So in a sense, you guys are shooting yourself in the foot. You know what I mean? Like you guys are the reason why these numbers keep jumping up so high and everything keeps getting postponed. Uh, what was it? A- April thirty first or whatever it was, May first, May fifteen. It's just gonna keep getting pushed back.
To me, I just think that is wild that we have um, government officials. Who are saying, hey, let us be basically the um, round zero. To see whether or not, um, you know, what would happen if we put our um. You know, if we reopen businesses, the fact that we have uh, people like the mayor of Vegas, uh Carolyn Goodman. Who is saying um, she, her, her city will be, you know, reopened as a test dummy. Uh, you know, to see how that would work out. Like we're risking and also, who, what, not president. What, there was one official that said, oh no, not official, was it Dr. Phil or Dr. Oz? Who said something like, who, there's only gonna be a small percentage of students that will die. Or, you know, that it's, it's better to, you know, have the schools reopen. And have a percentage of people, of small children or children, period. That would, you know, essentially die from this virus. They would rather have that than to quar- to stay quarantined where you would have a minimal risk. Um, of people passing away, of, of people dying, of people getting ill from, from this type of disease. I just don't, I, I, I think that for me, it put in perspective like who we follow. Um, and like who we have in charge because uh, yeah, it's just like Dr. Oz. Um, Dr. Oz, the, the mayor of Vegas.
Nah, and I think that's something to like to be talked about too, right? So there is also uh, miscommunication between the people who in the states, people in the cities. Um, like the state governments and stuff. So think about like Cuomo, like there is like a discrepancy of like. Hey, I think all of New York needs to say shut down or, excuse me, and then just New York City needs to say shut down. So if, even if you think about like Atlanta, well, Georgia in general, and them saying they want to open Georgia back up. All of Georgia, like in theory, not many, not much is happening like outside of the cities. But Atlanta will be the one that takes the hardest hit because of being like an actual city. But like, if you think about the rest of like the Midwest and shit like that, the reasons we're also not hearing about them, one, yes, they're having cases. But these niggas are all spread the fuck apart. Like, your countryside is gonna be very much so different. Like, they're saying Philly is the next hotspot. So Philly is obviously gonna be a bigger thing because of it being a city and everybody living in closer quarters. Whereas like being in a countryside or suburbs, we're not in an apartment with other people. We're not, we have our own houses, kind of shit like that. So it's also like being cognizant of like what happens to city guidelines and covid versus what happens with like rural. So do we stay the same? But like, if New York City stays shut down, but the rest of New York State stays open. What's that gonna look like? Because Syracuse is definitely not New York City, right? So that's the kind of shit I've been thinking about is just like, what does this actually look like from a policy standpoint? And also what does this look like from an impact standpoint? But these niggas still protesting is real dumb anyways. So I'm gonna let natural selection happen and maybe that means that fifty-three percent that decided to vote for Trump.
But, but I. This, this is like, like we have to determine like going forward, who would be, would like elect for governor and stuff like that because. Um, them opening up Atlanta, well, just Georgia as a whole is trash. It was.
Lisa Lancebottom said, not on my watch. She said, that was not my decision and she exposed them asses so fast.
Stuff like that, like just them opening that. And then like, if other people want to travel there just because they know it's open and then bringing it back to where they like. Originally like reside at is, is trash. So I think that like going forward, we need, we need to like think about who we're like voting in as governor, who we're voting in as mayor. Because it's really important.
Right. And I think that's why I was gonna jump in is, this is another example of why local elections matter, I think, matter the most. Uh, just because the policy that's gonna affect you the most is going to be the one at the local level. We tend to look at presidential like years, uh, those elections as the most important. That's where you see the better numbers. But this is really the people who are in place to impact you are now making these decisions that are affecting us the most. And going back to the natural selection thing, um. I'm on the side of the fence here because with, I, I get it, you, the comment that's made in terms of like. Dumb people are gonna be dumb and they're gonna be affected and just kind of taken out. But the people that are kind of like leading that. That uh, narrative and leading that voice are these big business owners who are like, open up the economy. Who are still not gonna be affected because they're gonna be sitting back just like they were not having their hands in the pot to begin with. Except for where it comes financially for them. So they're gonna say, yeah, open this up because your lives don't matter. Your money matters to me and you're gonna continue spending this, but I don't really care if you end up dying.
I just want to add to that, like when we think about, oh, natural selection, um, not only big businesses um, not being affected. But look who are at the front lines. It's usually people of color. So, and people of color and black people like. For example, I had read an article, I'm just gonna read it off to you. It said that one hundred percent of deaths from covid in Richmond are black. But African Americans are forty percent of the population, forty percent of the population, but a hundred of the deaths. Are black. So when we, when we really break this down, those people, the Karens and. Whoever of the world who are, you know, protesting, um, you know, and trying to um. Reopen up America, they're not gonna be the ones, nine times out of ten, who are gonna be, you know, paying. Like these medical bills or, you know, being sick, going back to what Marquis said. It's gonna be the people in urban communities who are gonna be the most impacted. The fact that. Flint, Michigan still doesn't have clean water. Like, do you really think like, this is, this is not gonna be natural selection? This is another way that we are systematically.
Like, let's be, I'll also like be clear too. Like, when I talk about natural selection, I'm just like, they're just a bunch of idiots out there. Like I said in the beginning, like, these assholes are in front of like the healthcare facilities. So if you look at the breakdown, the racial breakdown of who's nurses. The racial breakdown of who's like public transportation drivers and those in those spaces are probably black and brown people. Um, so the natural selection is just like, hopefully all these fucking Trump supporters will, while they're in the middle of their shit. Just don't do it in proximity to the places where our essential workers are at. So just to be clear about that.
I, I figured that's what you meant. I just kind of wanted to expand upon it.
Nah, I appreciate that though. Um, cool. Any other comments about um, natural selection and these protests? I think we're done on Darwin. Alright, let's talk about the culture. Marie, this is your segment. Uh, what you been talking about this time around?
Um, I wanted to talk about the versus battles that's been happening on IG.
Our black ass joy.
Yeah, um, it initially started as was beat against Timbaland and then they became like creators. And getting everybody to battle against each other. And it's honestly, like, it's something like. It's, it's happening for quarantine, but it's honestly something that people are looking forward to and they're clearing their schedules for just to sit down and. It's breaking records, especially with the um, Teddy Riley versus Babyface, you know, because at first they did it and it was a hot ass fucking mess. And then the second time they did it, like, but the memes and everything, like, everybody was tweeting about it, like, they're looking on live. They're, they're on live and they're tweeting about it. So everybody's engaged in, not only is that, it like, it shares the history of hip hop, of R and B, like. Um, Neil versus um. Yes, that was my favorite. So smooth and everything like that. But then like DJ Premier versus RZA, like. And they're teaching, like they're telling their stories of how they made the songs or how they came up with the beats or whatever. Like that, that shit is like amazing. And like, a lot of people don't know these things. And I think that like, them breaking the internet just recently shows how black people run the culture. And I think that's pretty important.
Yeah.
Nobody else's thoughts.
I loved it. Um, I was thinking to myself like, this is really, and going back to what Tyler said, like, like the creatives. I'm super thankful for, um, you know, the creatives who have made being quarantined just a little bit better, you know? Um, yeah, no, like this, mm-hmm, the, I mean, the verses were pretty much. It got me through the week. Like, I literally was like, I gotta, I just gotta make it to Saturday. And because you see like how on social media we all came together. Um, what was the first one that they did, Marie? Do you remember?
With um, Swift versus Timbaland.
I think I missed that. I, I, I was late to it, but then once I got on it, I was just like, yeah, this is like super dope. Like, I just love the, probably gonna butcher this, Marquis, is it camaraderie?
Yo, you got it.
Yeah. Out of here. But uh, yeah, I just think that it was um, very, to me, it also reminded me because. I've been in my like rap bag a lot. I'm like, oh my God, I, I love Neil. Like, I really forgot. You know, like what I used to listen to as a kid because I've just been kind of focused on like, you know, like rap. And I forgot about like R and B and like the early two thousands and even like um, T-Pain and um, Little John's. Um, like theirs, theirs was like, oh, I was like, oh shit, like, we really had like that, that early two thousands. Like that was, it was jumping like, like I really, I really miss like, wrote like that era. And like, it really made me think to myself like, oh my God, if I could go back in time, it was, it was like going back in time for me.
I really enjoyed it. I haven't caught too many of them. I'm just always so wrapped up in Jade. I don't really, uh, I haven't really been on social media as much. The one I did catch, I caught um, who was it? Manny Fresh versus Scott Storch, which wasn't fair at all. Uh, but also, uh, nobody brought it up about, I seen a couple tweets um, about the whole who has more hits, Jay-Z and Drake. Um, I seen a lot of comments there and there. It took everything in me not to argue with these niggas. I know how I am.
You know what? We'll put that up tomorrow when we release the episode too, like, because I saw that Jay-Z versus Drake, John, and I was like, why are we putting those two in a category? Together? I think that's the part that annoyed me. Cause I was like.
That's another thing.
Like, that's not a battle I would want to see, to be honest. Like, I'm just like, the one, two different generations.
Who could go against Jay-Z, like to pay Donald's advocate? I feel like it would be Drake versus Jay-Z, but it's like the eras, it's hard. Because I mean, it's like. I don't know, that's the music with Marie segment. I'm just saying, cause like, but who like Kanye? Who, who would go against Jay-Z?
Nobody. But um, I just really, I really loved how like, you know, it was. It, it just sparked the conversation, which led to a whole bunch of o- other like battles. Like these lives transformed into, you know, Jay-Z versus Drake. And then I also seen somebody says some dumbass shit like, oh, French Montana's dumbass. Gonna say, he does better than Kendrick. I can't remember, I'm paraphrasing.
If you don't take your unforgettable ass and go somewhere else, like.
People completely disregarded that though. Like people, if you notice, it was like one, one, he made one comment. He said, you know, he got more hits than Kendrick. Young Thug responded. And then it was Young Thug versus French. Because niggas knew French Montana wasn't fucking with Kendrick. You know what I mean? But it was, it's very entertaining. It was just, it just sparked a convo that I was really interested in.
I think I, I think I saw a tweet that said, like, someone put a gun up to their head and asked them to repeat like a French Montana like lyric. Or something like that or song. And he, he said, he would just scream, ha, and just hope that. It's time to run away.
They were like, no, I would say any, they were like, I'll just rap whatever, I'll rap any verse because then, so nine times out of ten, the nigga don't even know the verse.
You could literally rap a Jay-Z verse. I think he has a Jay-Z verse that he like took. You could rap a Jay-Z verse for a French Montana, Montana verse. Sorry, I'm, I'm a convo.
Now that you meaned yourself asshole.
Yeah, I was like, what the hell?
I know, but that's not fair because listen, like I feel like y'all don't be giving in. Um, the center tried to comfort me and I don't appreciate that. But he definitely tried to comfort me, talking about, oh, it's like, it's like some niggas make raps and other niggas make memes, da-da-da-da-da. And I'm like, French has hits though. He has so many, but. I'm no, no, he, no, I'm giving his credit. He has hits, but he was like, oh, but they're all. So that's the question that I want you guys to ask. Yeah, like, is that, so is that, does that count? Does that count?
So you, are you, are you saying he has more?
What are you looking at?
No, he does not have more hits than Kendrick.
I think so.
I am looking up French Montana songs that's not unforgettable.
He got, hold on, hold on, hold on, because I.
Are rememberable. We can't remember a line that French Montana says.
I barely remember a line from unforgettable. Um, I'm crying. If y'all, look, if y'all listening to the podcast. And y'all can tell us a couple hits from French Montana to help Bree's point, then go from there. I think Bree just twerked in the camera. Um, other than that, I ain't gonna hold. I've been enjoying these. The R and B battles have been my favorite part of these. Um, I'm dead excited because I want to see like Mariah Carey go up against somebody. Because you know, Mariah Carey writes all of her hits. Toni Braxton.
She, she did what? Wait, 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 wait. Mariah Carey did what?
Writes all of her songs.
Why was I thinking of, I was thinking of J Lo, nevermind.
Mariah is known as a songwriter first and foremost, though. Like, the majority of her stuff, she's written. I'll say that like ninety percent of her work has, like, she has some part of writing in it.
I'll give her eighty percent.
Sean Garrett says.
I'm giving Mariah more than that because Mariah will talk about writing circles around everybody.
Listen, eighty is good. It's not like we're talking about J Lo who steals from Ashanti. We're talking.
That part. Look, truly, but yeah, no, I would love to see like, um, the R and B girls take over some stuff too. Because we've been seeing all the men who've been like really writing hits, but the one I'm really, I'm, the one I'm truly waiting for is Missy Elliott. Cause like, she has Aaliyah really under her belt and people would dead be sleeping on that. So that's somebody I've just been like. I don't know who I'd give like Missy Elliott versus who. I don't know who that would be, but.
Go up against.
See, I feel like she should go up, I feel like they're being very like, oh, she needs to go up against a woman, but that's like kind of sexist in a way. Because if she has hits, what she does, I, just personally, we should be, go, you feel me like?
That would be.
That's actually not a bad matchup.
Same time period, same crazy.
Exactly.
But they can go up against their music videos, to be completely honest.
Would be beautiful.
And like Missy Elliott, if you have music videos.
Yeah, I'm here for that.
We need to just bring back the love of music videos again, though.
Randy.
Oh, Brandy Ricky.
Catalog is fire.
No doubt about that. Alright, so we'll leave that as another question to put up. Like, who would we want to see like, be in a versus battle together too? So if you're listening from the dear listener audience, please let us know. What? And what? Oh, true. Um, and then other than that, we got our last topic before we bring in uh, Mark. I definitely told him seven o'clock, but it's not, it might be like seven ten. He said, I know how the show goes, so I knew y'all were probably run over anyways. Um, so I was like, thank you, Mark. So um Bree. You talking, you talking to us about beige as fuck?
Beige as fuck? You're wrong for that, okay, but hold on cuz I got my notes. I didn't, I thought you were gonna do the intro, so I'm really not ready. He wasn't ready, but um, sorry. Um, so yeah, like at first, and I I feel like I could just jump right into it because everyone has been talking like on social media about the show by Kenny Barris, which is called Black As Fuck or Black AF for short. So a lot of what people have a problem with is just the colorism of it. Um, because his wife, and the show is based off of his true actual life, so he he has an interracial wife. Um, and because of that, he has interracial children. So the show, um, which if you haven't watched it, but you've watched um Blackish, that's basically the the essence of it. They said that this was supposed to be like a more realistic or what he wanted to have on ABC, but you know, you really couldn't have that nigga shit on ABC, so he went to Netflix. But to make a long story short, you know, a lot of what's talked about is like the unfairness of, you know, these shows being made with people who are just that one beige shade. And I just wanted to bring it to the group because we know that black people are not a monolith and I just wanted to see, did you enjoy the show despite the the reviews? Or what what are your thoughts on this personal, like this person, this particular show?
So I didn't finish the show. I was dibbling dabbling here and there, but the first episode, I wanna say uh the I don't even know the girl's name. The girl who's pretty much making all the commentary, she says something that really turned me off to the whole show. She was like, talking and speaking about their house. They were like, yeah, this is a, for black people, this is like an amazing house. Um, and for white people, it's just a nice house. And I'm like that that comment right there really turned me off for the, from the whole show and I'm not quoting her exactly, I'm paraphrasing. But
We need dog trying to get into film score, right?
Yeah, her. Um, for her to make a comment like that makes it seem like black people aren't supposed to have things that white people typically do. Um, so I kinda lost interest from the show from the very first episode. Um, and then I would, you know, zone back. I was letting it play, but I was zoned back in here and there and I would hear a couple funny one liners or whatever, but I mean, I was turned off from the whole show very early.
Uh, for me, um, I really, I will continue to say, I think if the show's name wasn't called Black As Fuck, um, it would be, it would be received so much better. Um, but it would be better if it was just like, hey, this is just Meet the Barrises or something like that. That shit makes more sense to me. Um, but I think it's just more so like I'm tired of seeing um artists in general, um, at least black creators who really see like there's a, I got a mechanism and let me keep it working kinda thing cuz he got the Blackish, the Mixtish, the Grownish and now Black AF. But I think like he is in the same boat, which is turning into like Tyler Perry and Lena Waithe. Um, in a sense where they try to declare like, hey, these are very, these things are for black people. But I think by you trying to prove and validate that these things are black people, you're still inadvertently working with the white gaze either way. So you're still trying to like take, break out both of these things. Um, so for me, watching that, um, the last half of the season, I actually thoroughly enjoyed.
Five through eight?
Yeah, five through eight were fire.
Yeah.
Like, um, and I think that's really when he started to find his like thing into it, but leading up to those episodes, me and Amanda were watching it, well, watching it. And it just turned into background noise, but I think it's a show like I recently it's come out that he said it's supposed to be somewhat like satirical, but I think satire has to be done in a very specific way. And I think that satire did not hit. I think he actually missed the mark on it being sat- satirical uh rather than anything. But the part that really turned me off the most was the fact that the kids were cussing right back at them. And I was like, I wish I would. The my mom would slap the taste out my mouth. Like, yeah, so I think it's just the different, it's definitely like his perspective. Um, cuz I don't relate to it because I'm not a rich black person. And now from the colorist standpoint, I'm like, now you know, there are fifty shades in a black, of black in a family. That's my rant.
Okay, can we get the, can we get the review from the Mixtish? You know who you are. You can hear me, sir.
Yeah, I know. I I'm sitting back down. I was trying to make my French press. Give me a second.
No, she's lying. She didn't have to say the Mixtish. She could at least just be like, the alternative black, like, he said the Mixtish.
Um, okay, my my take on it. I didn't even really pay this show any intention, uh, attention until another Mixtish reached out to me. And it was just like, ah, so we gotta talk about Rashida Jones, don't we? And I was like, what the fuck happened? So I, that that's what really uh put me on to what was going on. And so for me, it was a different type of reception and how I navigated through all of this because I approached it as what's going on with Rashida Jones and then I saw all of this like commentary on, she's black, she's not black, she's just biracial. Um, but her dad's Quincy, so that that's how I came into the whole mix. And so for for my take, it was a lot of um identity crisis kind of conversation that came into play was even about like colorism or anything like that because I was looking at everything that was being said about Rashida Jones and it was almost as if it was being said about me. And it became a weird place for me to even try to navigate because it's I sit with a different set of privileges for being mixed, for being biracial, for being fair skin. And so it became like, do I even have a voice in this conversation because I can't talk about the colorism that exists and the lack of representation that is present on shows and on in media, but on the other side, I'm like, there aren't very many characters who are intentionally biracial or multiracial.
Was it relatable?
Huh?
Was the show relatable?
Oh, yeah, for me, definitely. There's a lot of things that I related to in terms of Rashida Jones's character, in terms of the kids and some of the things that just get brought into to question or what like I needed that became an area of my life that I had to start addressing. Once I become old, like became older and started realizing, oh, you know, I'm just not me. I am black and I am white. How do I navigate the space because on the white end of things, I'm too black, but on the black end of things, I'm too white. And it it was trying to like, what is my uh my currency because Rashida Jones talks about like dancing as her like currency in terms of being a black person. Well, if you can dance, that that question's not there anymore.
Yeah.
Um
Well, my mom thought that shit was hilarious. She was like, yep, that's true. It is definitely the black card cuz uh, you know, you need to like even I'm sorry to interrupt you, Tyler. It's just some thoughts that I had in mind. I'll, and I actually wanted to ask you because you are biracial. It's because I feel like this like for me was like a a look into like, we got to peek inside what it's like to have a interracial family. Like, you you know, this is what you see when the um, the, you know, when the black people, you know, because it it's tough. You either have like the black side of the family and they all come see, they all come over or you have like the white side of the family and they all come over. So I I thought that Kenya did an amazing job of highlighting like his specific life. However, I feel like personally, it's it's said something that it's and it's just so many lyrics that's with it because I feel like it's not, it's not fair for him not to be able to tell his story. But we know that we like, where are the dark skinned people in shows like in that on Netflix like
Okay.
We don't get to see this type of content with people who who are
We didn't grow up. I would also argue that we didn't grow up, well, in theory, we didn't grow up. This new generation is not growing up with that content, right? Cuz I think if we look at the nineties, um, we had a lot of dark skinned people as well. Um, so that's something I, but that's like, but now I'm seeing things like, I'm not gonna watch like, I'm not gonna find myself watching black shows if I don't see myself represented in those tones. So that's why I prefer to watch shows like Insecure.
But then I like, just like going back to like the family dynamic, I, well, and Marquis, I feel like you said that like insecure is great. But like, I don't know if I would watch Insecure with my, with my little, like my little brother and sisters. I think that there is, there is a need to have you know, like shows like The Cosby's back where, you know, you see a family and again, families we have, you know, the they, we have light skinned people in the family, we have dark skinned people in the family. So I feel like it's important that Kenya gets his light, but it's just, we know that Hollywood is very racist and very colorist. So I I think that we need to have also, you know, other shows and maybe Dear Redding couldn't put like shows up there that have people that are
Trailer was kind of cringey, so that's the trailer
Well, I mean
Wanna watch it at first because it was really cringey and and then like, I don't know, I felt like, it felt like not to drop any names, but it felt like when people tried too hard, like, I don't know, watching the trailer was just like, they were trying too hard to I mean, I guess you're biracial, that's that's understandable, but I feel like they were, the trailer was like trying too hard to fit as black stereotypes. That's that is what made it cringey for me and that's why I like, oh, I was like, oh, I wanna watch Black As Fuck. And then when like Manny put it on last night, I was like, oh, I don't really care cuz I'm not intrigued by it like and I think we're like, like speaking this into like a whole other perspective of like colorism, I'm like, we did grow with like mainly dark skinned um sitcoms like Moesha, Family Matters and stuff like that, but if you think about it, um light skin, like not trying to make it like a battle, but like light skinned people have more, I guess coverage than darker skin cuz it's like, I'm just thinking about like watching like YouTube and like Jackie Iman, her talking about like, you can go to a makeup store, you can get thirteen thousand shades of lighter skin, but you cannot find darker skin type like um like complexions for darker like women. Even though it it has, it's not really the same thing, but it's like it it is kind of similar in a sense, but like, I I wasn't into it just because the trailer was cringey. It didn't draw me in because I feel like they were just trying to fit the black stereotypes that they were like, I guess it was, it's his life, but a little exaggerated and I didn't, like, if it was just
I thought Blackish was his life too, so that's why I was confused.
So here's, here's my arguments with all of this because um I look at a lot of like white media as being very repetitive in the same space, right? And we kind of allow that that to happen. I'm not trying to like defend or, you know, attack anything, but um I think, I think it's almost Tyler Perry-esque in this, in the sense though, it's he found what he's able to do and make a profit off of it. He's just repeating it and I think last week on Alternative Black Podcast, I kind of mentioned the fact that it was just like I'm okay with the same story being told over and over again because different people find that story at different points and in different ways and for the reasons he didn't like Blackish on like cable versus why he wanted to do the same show on Netflix and be a little more cringey, which I think was a deliberate thing. Um, that I, it's just, it's whatever's happening on that side and I can see why people don't wanna watch it. Um, cuz cring- cringiness is the same reason I didn't wanna watch The Office.
Same.
So I I can see that.
It was beyond cringey. It was like when somebody came on our podcast and said, start it from the bottom. Like when I watched the trailer, it literally took me back to, took me back to that exact moment. And I was like, I'm not
And I think it is like, uh, I think it is also like an interesting take too, like I don't necessarily agree with Tyler in that um space of like these stories being repetitive cuz I think if this is gonna be done, it needs to like have a full acknowledgement of it as well. So I think
Well, see
Part that kinda like throws a little bit is because we already deal with, and I think they said on the grapevine, but like this idea that we're dealing with colorism anyways. And are we gonna repeat that exact same cycle of saying, hey, in order to reach this level of greatness, you have to be this specific Q. If you were lighter than D Will, you're good to go.
One, I I I wanted to bring up the the whole point that, yeah, the grapevine actual, that that video, that episode of the grapevine is actually really good and if you haven't tuned in and watched it, I think it hits on a lot of really good points. Just don't listen to Jimmy. Um, but I, the other part I was gonna say was, for the most part, I didn't know too much about Kenya outside of this either. And so for the the tweets that I saw him put up and for him to be trying, I I guess, trying to speak as the culture and having like that understanding and and then to present the show in the way that he did, yeah, I see some issues in it. Um, so this is, this is where my, my struggle with all this came from. Cuz I was one coming from it as everything that I was hearing about it leading up was from the biracial standpoint and seeing social media attack biracial um individuals, multiracial individuals and me coming from like a point of I understand my blackness now to now questioning what does my blackness actually means? Um, just kinda got, I had this buildup process and then fell into like a whole deterioration of it. But then to look at the other side of things and to and say, okay, where where can the show actually be critiqued? And what what uh happens here? And and that's where I could under, I started understanding more of the frustrations and what was was happening. I think my question with all of it is, now, should the show exist and what should the title? Uh, cuz I think Marquis said, like, if it was named something differently, maybe there's something
Meet the Barrises.
Right.
That's how yo kids talk to you? That's how yo kids talk to you?
But I wanna
Everybody else getting their chest caved in.
I kinda wanted to ask everybody that, should the show exist and if it should, what should uh Black AF?
Yeah, I think, I think these are the good questions for our um, uh, like audience design because you know, it, you can't ignore that we have biracial brothers and sisters. Um, but at the same time, we know that being darker, having a darker complexion, you don't see yourself on on media. So imagine being a dark skinned little girl and you look at, you know, you go to watch this and you're like where where are people who look like me? And that's the thing too, it's like Kenya
Yeah.
You're you're fully black. You didn't have no black cousins. Like my mom is a little darker than me, like we were joking around and we were like, when the kids had, um, you remember, um, I'm gonna call her Rainbow. I think that's actually her name. So when Rainbow, you know, invited the people over for the cookout, you know, so that her kids can be calm, like, you know, she was like, oh, you know, she wants her kids to have their black experience. And we looked and even the people picked to be on the show weren't darker, didn't have the dark, I hate saying darker. You know, it's just for me personally, but like, I feel like we more and I feel like Kenya Barris has the clout to be able to uh to to start showing people a darker skin tone. And if he cannot do that, then he needs to get out of the way so that we, cuz it's unfair and him at being forty five years
Wait, so what do you, what do you mean by get out of the way though?
Because I feel like he knows his position of power, so either like as a, and we'll call him a gatekeeper. He is, he has become a gatekeeper. He has had, he has put in the work on in Hollywood that he can now decide what he wants to display. So I I respect that he wants to display his truth, but he has I feel like as a forty five year old black man from Compton, you have many truths. So now, if you're gonna start, if you can lead into, okay, this is my, this is my family, let's let's have, uh, you know, you did a um, you did a Mixish, what about you? What about you? You know, cuz the uh Blackish, if he, the dad was talking about his life growing up in Compton, tell that story too. We we need all sides of this because right now he's only showing us one face and that's the same face that Hollywood has shown us for years. So that's just me personally. I appreciate that this was something that was done for his family and done for people that are biracial, but also there needs to be more and I hope that he has more going forth. I agree, it should have been called Meet the Barrises. And um, I I definitely think that it's worth, it's it's needed, it's necessary. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm gonna throw that over to D Will real quick too. Um Go ahead.
I completely agree. Um, there was nothing that you guys said that I uh didn't agree to. Um, I don't like the name Black As Fuck. I haven't seen anything on that show so far that I was like that's black as fuck. You know what I mean? Like, no, especially not the kids talking back, like that shit does not happen in a black as fuck household. That does not happen at all. You know what I mean? But yeah, I'm just, I I agree with everything that you guys were saying.
Yeah, I mean, for me, um, I think the show, it can exist on its own. I think it can have a different kind of name. Once again, I do think it, we, I personally think we're just in a time where we feel the need to, where Hollywood and film sometimes feels the need to declare things as like, this is a black thing that black people need to be tuning into. And I think when you make that declarative statement, that's when I think you're gonna be put under a lot more scrutiny. Like, Blackish works because it is a black family that came up and happens to be in a sub- because it is a black family that came up and happens to be in the suburbs, and you can have that lifestyle, but you're also battling with, like, I want to make sure my kids still retain this black culture, whereas the other one, Black as Fuck, really kind of just focuses on like, hey, this is my family, this is the makeup, but also this is not something that all black people can necessarily like, relate to, right? Um, that's why I brought up Insecure, that's a show that just, it's a show that's Black as Fuck, but it happens to be Black as Fuck, like, we know the little cultural nuances that are in that show, so we see something, we know, oh, that's for us. And Lena Waithe falls into the same thing too, right? Um, she creates shows that she's just like, yo, this is the blackest thing we've ever done, blah, 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 blah. Um, but in reality, you're just like, is it though? Um, so I think that's also a conversation, so I think Kenya Barris is definitely under the microscope right now, but for me personally, I, I enjoy him, because then are we gonna also have, um, Justin Simeon, who created Dear White People in this conversation as well, right? Um, so I think these are different like nuances of the conversation, because I think in part of it, we keep saying colorism, uh, but then it's also, and I think this might be for another episode, is like, we also unfairly, in some instances, unfairly target biracial people, they can't help the fact that they're gonna end up being light-skinned. Right? As opposed like D Will, who's like blacks through and through, who just happens to be light-skinned, right? So I think there's also like those histories and more nuances that come into this conversation. Um, but overall, I'm just like, I don't mind it when they really get into like the meta conversations, like, can we actually critique other black people's work? Honestly, can black people do that? And then naturally start talking about, like, I think episode five is their best episode.
Yeah.
Issa Rae come in, where they have Lena Waithe, where they have, um, Ava DuVernay all come in, and they're actually chatting. So I think those, that episode made me more intrigued by Kenya Barris, the writer, and his experience as a black writer in Hollywood, and getting to that point. I think the rest of the shit, if it was more so about that part of his journey, love it, but if it's really just trying to declare like, oh, this is really just a black ass show. But that's also like an experience that I personally can never relate to. It brought me back to my roommate in college. He was a middle-class black, I'm a low-income black. He lived in a world where he loved Childish Gambino and the rapper, where I was just like, those artists don't make sense to me, I don't connect with their work, so I'm gonna go to the black rappers that I actually like, feel a little bit more in tune with, and that's kind of what I was getting at with that, is like, it's meant for some black people, but you know, the further up you get, the less black it becomes, the dark, the lighter it becomes. That's my long-winded finish, but I don't mind the show being there, it should just be called Meet the Barrises. We might end up just doing like an extra part of that conversation, because I don't think that conversation is actually done with, but I also want to be respectful of Mark's time. Uh, because, no, I told him six forty-five, then seven o'clock, hey, seven eighteen here. Alright, so that pretty much wraps up our Word on the Street segment, we know we gotta, we really got into our old ways. Normally these episodes are definitely under an hour now, and no longer is that today. Um, so what we got going on in this conversation, we're moving to Reading's Finest, Bree, we'll still put your stupid question in here, we'll just include Mark in this conversation. Um, but Reading's Finest is basically where we interact with somebody and interview somebody from the Reading community, who is doing something positive um, as well, or can just add like a new perspective, so what we got going on, we have another returner. We had Mr. Deadline, um, he was just telling us that he was about to start, um, running for school board, so now we fast forward, what, a year later since that interview? And man, you out here representing for the young folk.
So, I hope so.
Right, so real quick, um, just before we get started into this interview, um, can you tell us, um, and this is not just for us, this is for our new listeners as well on the show? But who are you, what do you do now? Um, and just give us a pushfield of who is Mark Deadline.
Awesome, awesome, well, thanks, thanks for having me on again, guys, I appreciate that. Uh, my name is Mark Deadline, I am born and raised in the city of Reading, um, grew up uh, going all the way through Reading School District, uh, went on to Lehigh University for, uh, for college, for my undergrad. Um, went into the world of sales after that, long enough to know that I hated that. Um, and then, so I jumped ship, um, completely went into an industry that I had never encountered before, um, uh, the industry of higher ed, so I've been recruiting for Albright College, uh, for the last three or so-ish years. So that's been a neat experience, because I get to go to a lot of different places and interact with a lot of different students from a lot of different areas. Um, my first year I was in a, a lot of PA, my second year I was in a lot of, uh, New York and, uh, northern New Jersey, uh, and then this past year I was in a lot of southern Jersey, so I really kind of bounced around and seen a lot of that kind of stuff. I announced my candidacy for the Reading School Board in two thousand, December of two thousand eighteen. Um, went through that whole process last year, um, was successful, uh, and was sworn in this past December. Um, and, and we're kind of, it's kind of where we're at now. Um, so my motivations for running were just, uh, pretty wholesome, I mean, I, I've, I grew up in the Reading School District, I just want to continue to make it a place, um, where students feel like they can come out and be successful. Um, but more so than that, I want to be a voice, um, for students who, um, don't know kind of how to navigate uh, the, the, the process of high school and, and post-high school and those sorts of things. Um, so, uh, there's a lot of, lot of kind of stuff we could get into about the inequities of, of urban education, but I'm sure that'll come up at some point during this conversation.
Um, alright, so does anybody want to run with the first question before we get started?
Um, yes, can you explain what the school board's purpose is now that you're there?
Yeah, so I think, um, I think when people think of a school board, uh, their, their first kind of inclination of what it is um, is a bit of a misconception, um, so, uh, you'll see, um, kind of a lot of people, e- especially, uh, what I've noticed is when they, when they, when they're on a school board and then they go on to do something else, whether that's something political, or whether that's something professional, um, they'll tout, um, some pretty standard things, um, about their time on a school board, so they'll say, oh, we passed a budget of X amount of dollars. Um, where, I mean, there are some conversations that the school board gets involved in when it comes to, um, making and passing budgets, but like, I'm not sitting down with the CFO and coming up with a budget, you know what I mean? So, i- it's almost like a false perception when people are out here like, oh yeah, we passed the three hundred million dollar budget, it's like, yeah, I mean, somebody did the work and you said that it looks good. Um, so, it's really, it's really what that is. Um, the, the administration really is the frontrunner, it just does an immense amount of work, I don't understand how those people sleep, ever. Um, they're, I, I, like, I feel like they're always on call, um, but so the main function of a school board is, is essentially just kind of, uh, as a, um, a- a- almost like a legislative type of body for, for the district, so, um, we do a lot of policy stuff. Um, we approve a lot of policies, we, um, we just kind of make sure that the district is operating the way that it needs to. Um, it is a, it is a huge entity, so, um, the, the, uh, the district itself does have a three hundred million dollar budget. Um, so that, that is a massive amount of money and a massive amount of responsibility. Um, so I think, uh, to, to just, to just put it, um, very, very simply is, essentially, we, we get presented information by a bunch of different people, and we kind of come together and decide whether or not we think it's a good or a bad idea. I hope that answers your question, feel free to press me if that was abstract.
No, that was perfect. Uh, anybody else got questions or follow-up to what he just said?
Um, I guess my question for you then would be, you know, going into the school board, you obviously had some expectations, and you kind of see all these memes and expectations versus reality. What, what kind of change in terms, in your eyes, from when you got elected and you were going into that first meeting to now being in there, what, about a year, and just kind of saying like, what, what the board really comprises of, is comprised of?
Yeah, so, so the thing is like, um, I don't think you really think about the humanistic part of it when, when you're running, so like how much you're gonna have to be able to interact with other people on the board. Um, so we're definitely still learning, this board has only been together for, um, a little over four months at this point. So we're definitely still trying to like, read each other and figure each other out, um, and so this whole, um, this whole, uh, world health crisis that we're going through right now has really put um, a strain on that, I think, because we're not having these in-person meetings where we interact with each other, we're not going to different events throughout the community where we can interact with one another. Um, and so, um, I don't want to say that it's, it's like hindered our decision-making at all, I think people are still um, doing what they feel like they need to do to represent our constituents, but, um, I think it's definitely uh, put us in a position to, w- we have to work a little harder to figure one another out. Um, so that's one of the things I just like didn't, like, I knew I'm coming onto a board, like, I'm gonna have to meet eight different personalities and kind of figure them out. Um, but I, I, I didn't really think about how much that would be a part of it, um, and I think it's a huge, a huge part of it. Um, so I think that's definitely one of them, and the formality of things is w- wild. Um, like, I, I mean, I, I, I had attended a million school board meetings before that, so I knew how they were structured and how they went. Um, but it's different when you're sitting on the other side of that desk and people are asking you to put your opinion out there, or if you have any questions, or asking you to vote on something that you think is, is important or big. Um, so, um, the, the just kind of like, knowing, um, when to talk, when to be complacent, when to be disruptive, um, is, is something that I'm still kind of figuring out, so.
Yeah, I guess what even like following up to that too is, for you, are you the youngest, you're the youngest board member? Um, so can you talk a little bit more about that experience, because I think it is important for younger people to kind of understand, like, if you decide to get into this, like, one, what was that journey like for you getting to the school board? Uh, but two, what is it like for you as the youngest person on the board? Like, you're still twenty, so like, in your twenties, so, like, what has that experience been like for you in particular?
Yeah, so it's, um, the, the campaign part of it, uh, I mean, we were really just doing what we felt made sense, but I mean, we didn't have a whole lot of guidance. Um, so really what I ended up doing, like, I'm just reading like Pennsylvania election code, and like, just like awful, boring, terrible stuff, um, but there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things, like, you can get in a lot of trouble if you, if you run a campaign the wrong way. Um, so, uh, making sure that we're compliant in all the financials, uh, making sure that we're totally transparent with our financials and, and things like that, yeah, I mean, we did, we had to raise a couple of dollars to, to fund the campaign, so, um, the, the campaign part was, was fun, it was a lot of work. Um, there's a lot of like legwork, you're get, you're getting out there, you're talking to people, you're putting up signs, you're, you're trying to go to as many events as you can get to. Um, but so that was interesting, because a- again, in, in that arena, you're, you're, you're one of the, when you're in your, your twenties, you, you're gonna be the youngest person in the room almost all the time. Um, so trying to figure out how, how to interact with folks, um, wa- was, was interesting, I mean, I, I had been in professional settings, but um, this is kind of a conversation I was having with Dr. Gumi, um, a couple of weeks ago, is like, I've not even been in the professional world for a long time, I mean, I graduated college four years ago. So, um, my, i- i- it's, it's, there are people that have been doing this for as long as I've been alive. And so trying to, trying to figure out how to interact with those folks, um, is definitely a challenge. Um, on the boards, uh, I think what, what, what is difficult to overcome um, is the idea that these people, again, have been doing this for a really long time, they kind of know how some of this stuff works, and try not to feel intimidated by, um, by their stature or by, um, the, their professional accomplishments and things like that. Um, knowing and being confident in yourself that you're there because people thought you should be there, and, um, use, use your knowledge to, to just kind of try and influence the conversation as much as you can. Um, so, it's, it's interesting, you're, you're often the youngest person in the room. Um, I'm in the room with a lot of very educated people, um, and, uh, that's, that can be intimidating in and of itself. Um, but you just have to be confident, um, in, in your ability to know what you're able to contribute to the conversation. Um, and, and kind of just, just try and move it along.
No, I, I definitely appreciate that answer, because I think that's something, um, that in this moment, we are starting to kind of, especially like in the middle of COVID and all that stuff too, we're definitely starting to see a moment where we're just like, Bree was mentioning it earlier, we have to really start thinking, Bree and Tyler, we're talking about like, we have to be more intentional about the people that we're electing into these spaces, so really take note of, um, who, how people react in this moment, so even for you right now, um, now that it's been four months and this is, you're in, you're pretty much in unprecedented territory, like, one, what do those meetings look like now? Are they all like virtual? Right, but then also in that moment too, um, what are some things, if, whatever you're able to disclose is like, things that the school board has to have in conversation now, or like rebudgeting and all that fun stuff?
Sure, so, um, yeah. What do those meetings look like?
I was gonna say, I did go to Mark's first meeting.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, I, I just like, everything that you stand on, like, I fully support you. Um, I just love that, that you do so much like, amazing work in the community. So I was like, I had to go to this, and it was the first time I was ever at one of the school board meetings. And I actually left early, I just want to say, the, the school board meetings are long, like. It was, you know, it was so much, like, as a ceremony, you have to, you have to wait for everybody to get there, then they introduce everybody, and, and then you guys went off for a while and left the room in order to like discuss, I guess, budgeting, and then they have screens up where, you know, they're talking about like, and they're just throwing numbers at you, I seen like, they were talking about budgets, and you're not just talking about, you know, like the castle on the hill, you're talking about like, the smaller schools, and I was like, I had my pen and paper there, because I knew I was gonna have some homework, but even then I was just like, bruh. Like, literally, I felt like brain fried, and then you think that everybody's on the same page? Like, no. I was like, oh, you guys were voting for someone, and I was like, okay, eh, okay, okay, and then I'm like, wait, that went left. I thought you guys were gonna vote for this person, but you actually went, and went the whole way around. Um, I do want to say to your point, um, to, to your credit, like, uh, like, as they had like an intermission, like, everyone was like really happy and like, saying how great of a job that you were doing. But for you to be the youngest person in that room, uh, was super impressed.
Uh, well, I appreciate that, Bree, um, I think, I think e- especially that meeting in particular, um, it was unusual that we went into executive session, um, that early, we went into executive session before we, we like, as the first part of the agenda, as opposed to the last part of the agenda, um, so we don't typically do that. Um, I'm not entirely sure why we did it that way, um, to be, to be honest, um, that was my first meeting and I was still trying to, trying to figure stuff out. Um, but, um, yeah, the, the meetings that we've been having lately have been long. Um, the, 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 the procedure and the, uh, formality of the meeting itself typically flows between like an hour, hour and a half, um, where stuff is presented to us, we talk about it, and then we kind of, we kind of move forward. Um, where, where things start to get interesting is during executive session, so in executive session, we're talking about, um, is things that are not public, um, so, uh, typically, the only things that we're gonna talk about there are going to be personnel. Um, because you can't talk about, obviously you can't talk about personnel, um, uh, uh, some, um, like, security type stuff, uh, so if we're, if we're buying systems for security, we don't want people to know what those systems are. Um, and, uh, like if we're talking about property, purchasing or selling off property or something like that, and so that's, that's typically, um, that's in accordance with something called the Sunshine Act, so Sunshine Act lays out what you can and cannot talk about in, in executive session. Um, so lately, the meetings ha- our executive sessions have been a couple of hours, um, so we, this past, this past week, um, we were, we were on from about seven to ten thirty. Um, the, the week before that, we were on like six to ten thirty, um, so, so they've been, they've been drawn out. Yeah, it's the kind of thing, it's the kind of thing where, um, you actually, um, I don't know if other board members do this, but I kind of like mentally prepare myself before I go into it, like, I try to eat something, try to make sure like I got my coffee ready and things like that, because it's just like, look, I'm gonna need some sustenance while we're, while we're dealing with this. Um, and, and, and it's difficult, but, um, I think, I think the, the, I think the board members are there for the, for the right reasons. Um, I think, um, once we figure each other out, we'll be able to work very cohesively together. Um, I can't say enough good things. I can't say enough good things about our administration in the Reading School District. I mean, some of those people are brilliant. I mean, our, both our assistant superintendents are, are super impressive, Dr. Sanchez and Dr. Murray. Our CFO has won like all kinds of different accounting awards, Wayne Garrett. He's incredible. Our attorneys, our compliance officers, I mean, everybody is, Dr. Mumine obviously is incredible. So I think, I think we're getting there. Meetings, I don't think will be that long after we, we cross a couple of hurdles. There are some just things that are clashing right now with COVID and some other things that were already happening that are piling on top of each other and it's, it's creating a lot to talk about and a lot of confusion. But we'll, we'll get there, we'll get there.
No, and speaking about COVID either way, like even being in the education space too, it's really starting to look at, we're starting to see a lot of the inequities that are in the urban education system in particular. And so even if it's like for y'all as a board, like what are some things that, either new policies that are being passed or any of that sort? What are things you're trying to do to at least mitigate that? Because we're starting to see like, oh, these inequities are being exacerbated because now there's, you can't hide behind these anymore.
So these are just, I mean, this is, this is wild. I mean, we're just in a position that nobody, I shouldn't say nobody, that a lot of people were, were kind of prepared for. And we weren't for various different reasons. So our district is the fourth largest district in the state. So that's something to take into consideration when you're talking about, do we have a one-to-one policy for, for Chromebooks, laptops? No, we don't, because that's eighteen thousand laptops. I mean, that's, that's a huge amount of money. So what ended up happening, and this is where, this is where I, I, I need to figure out how to not be so defensive. But sometimes I think it's necessary. So all over, all over social media, once this started happening, you see people start posting things about neighboring districts and how they were, they're very quickly getting things rolled out in regard to online learning and things like that. And it's like, yeah, they could do that because they had the laptops already. Like, we're gonna have to go out and purchase a bunch of laptops. Like this, this, when this all said and done, just for the technology standpoint, is going to end up costing a district somewhere around four million dollars. I mean, that's four million dollars that we already don't have. That we had to go out and purchase a whole bunch of stuff so that we could distribute it to our kids. So you, 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 you can, you can kind of, you can compare districts all you want, but you need to, you need to take, you need to look at them relative to one another. So that's been one of the biggest issues is that we're trying to, we're trying to make sure that our students are fed versus like, learning comes later, they need to eat. So that's been a huge undertaking too. It's taken a lot of time and a lot of, a lot of different people coming together, a lot of different logistical things kind of happening and working in sync to make sure that students are getting fed.
What do you, but, sorry, now to interrupt, because going into that, like what do you mean? Or can you go, can you expound upon that? Like, how are you helping students? When you say get fed, what do you mean?
Yeah, so the district, so a bunch of different agencies in the, in the city of Reading have kind of jumped on, jumped together to make sure that, that students are eating while, while we're out of, while we're out of school. So for a lot of kids, their only meals are when they come to school. So they get breakfast in the morning, they get lunch. And a lot of, a lot of schools do different kinds of like little snacks and stuff that they can take home. Some schools have stuff that, that they can, they can send them home with book bags full of food for the weekend and things like that. So I mean, you, you have students who are, are dealing with so much poverty and then you expect them to have internet access and a laptop at home. It's not, those aren't the kinds of things that, that we can worry about first. We need to worry about the food first, we need to worry about our kids getting fed. So the district has embarked on, at a lot of its, a lot of its schools, every day they give out, well, not every day. It's like every other day it's turned into. Some places are doing every day, the rec is doing every day, all of it's doing every day. But the school district, they're doing meals, breakfast and lunch. And then the rec and all of it's are kind of doing dinner to make sure that these kids have, have food to eat. We're doing a lot of different pantry type boxes and things like that. A lot of those are going out each, each week. So it's just like a, like a logistical nightmare, because you have, you have to, first you gotta, you gotta get this food from somewhere. And so it's a lot of just like purchasing food and making sure it gets to X spot and then throwing it in a box. And so it's very time consuming. You also wanna make sure that you're following CDC and state guidelines in accordance with, with social distancing and things like that. So there's a lot of moving parts that make it very, very difficult to do. But it's, it's been successful so far. I, I know Tyler and myself have, have been at the Reading Rec to help them out. So it's, I mean, it's, it's interesting. But so that, so that's what I meant when, when I'm saying that we need to make sure that students are getting fed. Luckily for us, since this, since the school district is so disadvantaged in, in terms of socioeconomics, we're in a, we have a, a, a federal grant that covers our food, so breakfast and lunch. So all of these, all of these things are going to be federally reimbursed. But for the meantime, that's, that's not entirely the case.
Cause I was part of the, the rec's summer programs too, is there's, there's a meal, meal program that everybody that's part of the rec programs, they get at least a lunch. So that'll, that'll help with the cost for self-supplying the, the family and the community around us.
Who's going out to, who's going out and delivering these meals? And can you tell me like a guesstimate of like how many meals or like?
Yeah, so, so when we're talking about, so it's, it's pickup. So, so people have to go to X location to grab them. So there are volunteers, teachers, other types of volunteers from, from wherever that are distributing these meals to, to the kids. So they come up and however many kids are in your family, like you, you get meals for those kids. But as far as like sheer numbers, like we're talking like thousands per week going out, like thousands per week.
That's wild, but also like super, we're super appreciative of the work that y'all are doing too. Cause a lot of this can go thankless, but just so y'all know, from just the Dear Reading team to everybody that are on these lines, like thank y'all for being able to keep our kids fed. Cause that'd be like, it'd be the most basic shit too, like, hey, we cannot function as a school district because our kids aren't eating. So we cannot expect them to perform well in school if their basic necessities aren't met. And that's the conversation that's always had, right? So I think that's something like, just to kind of reiterate more. So it's cool to actually hear like a personal anecdote of like what is happening and actually trying to, in my mind, I'm already thinking like, all right, so they gotta keep the social distancing and then also provide meals for all the people, make sure they're separate, all this shit that goes into it. So thank you for painting that picture for us as well. Any question from anybody else before I hit in with another question?
I was, I was gonna wait till further, like later on to ask this question, but we were talking about when you jumped into the race for, for school board and all the, the different laws and understandings of things that you can, cannot do while running in order to raise money and just kind of how you promote yourself. There's stuff with interview time and you, you can't really have an opportunity that someone else doesn't have and all, all that comes into that. Have you thought about like running a workshop for younger generations who maybe don't have a good understanding of that? And that's a lot of stuff to, to read and digest, putting something on to kind of promote other people like you to, to fill these positions?
No, I haven't, but that's, that's certainly an interesting idea. Because, so I think, I think some people that, that get involved in campaigns, they hire like campaign managers who know what's up. So like, my campaign manager was my fiance's mom. Like, we had never, we had never done campaigns before, like nobody knew what we were doing. Like, we just, you, you'd need a campaign manager. Everybody tells you, like, you need a campaign manager. So we're like, okay, you wanna do it? It's, and, and Fiani was, was my treasurer. So like, I mean, it's, you'd need to have a treasurer for, for these kinds of things. But there's just like nitpicky little things that you can get, you can get buzzed on, like the size of your signs and how early you put them out and, and things like that. You can get different fines. If you don't get your reports in on time, you get fined like X amount of dollars per day. We learned that the hard way. And what's, what really stinks about those is that you can't pay fines out of your campaign account. So like, we, and you get fined for each report. So I needed to turn in like three reports at one time. I was like, I was like five days late or something like that, cause I forgot. And so that's a hundred and fifty bucks that I needed to give these people because I forgot these, I forgot to do these, these signs. So I'm like, okay, like, I'm, I'm standing there at Election Services and I'm just like, all right, like can you take my card? Like just do it. And she's like, is this your campaign card? And I was like, yeah, it says Friends of Mark for School Board on it. She was like, she was like, no, you can't do that. And I was like, well, why not? And she was like, you can't pay fines out of your, out of your campaign account.
Yo, that's wild.
I was like, no. But then the office was closing and it was gonna be a weekend, so I was gonna get charged sixty more dollars. So I had to run to the back, like literally sprinting up Washington, or not Washington, up Penn Street to try and get to Wells Fargo, so I could take out some cash that I don't have to, to go take it down to Election Services again. I was stressed. But it's just like little things like that.
Right.
I didn't know you get monetary fines for this shit, like.
It's a whole monster.
It's, it's insane. And so, and it's very, it's very easy to get caught up too, like, because like at the beginning, I'm looking at like FEC guidelines, like federal election code stuff. And a lot of that doesn't apply to like your smaller local organizations. So I think I, I'm thinking that I have to do all this stuff and then I have a conversation with somebody and they're like, you're an idiot. Like, why, why did you go through all the trouble to do that? Like you're not running for senate.
But when he tells you that.
Yeah, exactly. It's like, I don't know, like it sounded good to me, so I, I, I felt like I needed to do it. But yeah, one, one thing, one thing that I found out, not to toot my own horn, but one thing that I found out that I'm very good at is, is petitioning. Getting petitions signed and, and doing it the right way. There's very, very easy things that you could do to get a petition thrown out. Whether that's somebody spelled their name incorrectly, they put the wrong date, somebody can't read it. If, if you screw up something at the top of the form, they get through the whole form out, which it's thirty signatures that you lost. I mean, just like crazy, crazy stuff that I found out going through this process that I'm very good at. Interesting to try and, to try and get together, because that's the whole thing. I mean, it, it's cool to be a young person in, in a, in a, in a, a, a big room with a bunch of old people trying to make decisions, but it's better if you have some more young people to, to do it with and to kind of, kind of help you push your ideas.
No, and I think that's like super important too, is like, I think Tyler really posed a really good question in terms of like getting more people in that space or different ways to activate people to wanna get into that space. And it all really starts with the education part of it, cause honestly, like you set the tone moving forward is just like, all right, Mark jumped in there and you're a reputable face in the city of Reading, at least for the younger demographic. So it really started making everybody think like, okay, like, all right, if Mark's in the school board space, Tyler sits on the board for the rec, Bree's on the board for the NAACP, like you have all these people in different spaces. What more can we do to start getting more people, younger people activated into these spaces? Cause I know this shit's be boring, you'd be like, all right, we gotta go. All right, I second, all in favor, all opposed, like all that fun stuff. So are there, do you have any ideas on how to make these meetings a little bit more engaging? When we get back to like, you know, regular programming and what that looks like and stuff? Cause I know sometimes sitting through them, you're just like, yay, y'all saying a lot of big things. I don't know when to interject, when can I not, when can I speak? Like, are y'all finding different ways to have to evolve with this looks like? Or are there just tips that you have for people who come to these meetings to kind of be aware of?
Yeah, so I mean, a lot of these meetings is inherently boring. If, if you're, if it's not something that, that, that you're dedicating a lot of your time to. So like, like for me, like I'm interested in this stuff. There, there, there does need to be an interest piece. So we, we can get, we can get young people activated all we want, but they do have to have some interest in, in that topic for it to, for it to be worthwhile.
Interested, if you don't mind me asking?
Say that again?
Can you tell me, why should they be interested?
Why should people be interested to be in a position? Or why should people be interested in what the district's doing?
Yeah, why, you, you know, we ask like, we need these to be activated, but really, when we talk about this and it, it is very mundane, why should they be interested? Like, what was your purpose in doing this? Cause you didn't have to.
Correct. Well, yeah, that's, I mean, that's very true. I don't get paid for it either.
And the amount of time you put in?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sorry, I was looking at Marie and Manny's. The way their eyes just said.
So yeah, I mean, it is, I think, I think you have to, you look at yourself and say, look, how much, how much do I feel like I can contribute in this capacity? So like obviously, we don't know, we don't need everybody to just wake up and say like, yeah, let's go. Like, let, let me go run for something, like just because. Like you, you don't want, you don't want people running for something just because they feel like they can or should. You want people to run for something because they feel like they have something to contribute and they have some type of interest in it. So in regards to why should people be interested, I mean, this is our, this is our life. I mean, we're gonna be here a lot longer than old people and all this. So we should, we should probably try to have some type of influence on what's going to affect us and our kids, because they're making decisions that are gonna affect them for a couple more years and, and then they're gonna be on their way out. So I think, I think just posing the, the idea to people that like, look, like this is our life. Like we have the ability to influence it, we just have to take that step to do it.
Right, and this is where I always feel like having youth coalitions or having like, being an organization and starting to identify people who could have a really good impact and who are younger, but just don't know what type of impact they could have is important. Because you start putting them into these rooms and having them be a part of the conversations and then they kind of weed themselves out in this, because they get to see the process, get to see like, ooh, I have a voice, I can actually be heard or this isn't for me, I'm not getting paid and just be out, which is fine. I don't think there is a problem with either of those, but it, it gets them into those positions and it helps kind of identify who's the next generation and, and trying to be able to say like, okay, we put you through this, you see you can be a part of this, you know, you know the ins and outs, get you to come in day one and get going. I don't think we're really identifying a lot of our youth who can have a real impact at this moment. We're letting them go on to whatever, which is fine again, but we're, we're not kind of building them up to say, even if you don't do it here, here's how you can do it wherever you end up.
Yeah, yeah, there certainly needs to be some, some sort of like coordinated type of effort in order to make something like this happen. So I mean, you have other, if other cities, and, and this is more governmental than it is related to schools, but I mean, you have other cities who have, who have organizations that, that advise city council and advise the mayor and things like that, just organizations of a bunch of people that got together and were like, look, we don't like how things are going. This is how we think we could help and how we think it should go. Lancaster is, is a prime example. Of course, in that case, it's a bunch of old people that sit together in a kitchen and, and talk about things and then present it to city council. But city council is receptive to it, that's the key, is that city council is receptive to it. So they, they come in and they're like, look, we think this could be really beneficial to the area. And the city council's like, yeah, cool, we think so too. I think one of the biggest problems that we run into here specifically in Reading is that people get upset when somebody disagrees with them. And it turns into like this very petty, like tit for tat type, type of deal, which is, I mean, as, as we all know, is not conducive to any type of discourse, because it, it's just not. So I think that in and of itself is, is the largest hurdle facing the city of Reading right now, is that people have been around for so long that they feel like they know so much, which they do. I mean, there, there are people that have been here for a really long time that know a lot about city history and the way government works and things like that, which is an asset. But you also need some folks that are gonna come in and have some forward thinking and, and push the city to, to expand in that way.
I would love to go back and like touch on, do you think, cause you said that this is what.
I would love to go back and like touch on, do you think, because you said that this is what, you didn't get your degree and this is like um different than, like you took a whole nother field. I just wanted to like, does this position fulfill you? Like, do you feel fulfilled and like you can wake up and do these meetings like for years um to come or what?
Um, yeah, so um, so I did, so in college, my my goal, I was gonna teach. Um I was doing a four plus one, I was gonna get my masters in ed and I was gonna be a social studies teacher. Um I, as I was taking those graduate courses, I recognized that I liked more about um I liked more about the functions of a school and the services that a school provides than I did teaching kids about the constitution. Um so uh senior, March of my senior year, I was like, no, I'm not doing it. I I'm done with that. I'm just gonna graduate and figure something out. Um so I graduated with a political science degree um and then went into sales, like I said, and ended up at uh Albright. Since my passion still is connected to education, um I'm, uh I'll finish up my my masters in ed um uh in December um of this year. So so that'll be exciting because that'll, that'll kind of expand upon what I'm able to do and what I'm able to contribute and how serious the people will take these um in certain situations. Um but uh as far as fulfillment, um absolutely. I mean, this, this is the kind of thing that I could see myself doing um for like as a, as a career, like getting into education policy, getting into um those sorts of things. Um so uh it's definitely, I mean, it's, you 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 wake up sometimes, um and I mean, like, you have, you have to read a lot of things and and but some of it is so interesting to me and um like I said earlier, I think that's a huge piece of it, uh you need to have some type of interest in it um for for you to be able, I mean, I think that goes with anything that you you set your mind to. Um so yes, it does fulfill me, fulfill me, um but I don't ever want to feel like I'm in a place where I'm complacent. Um so I enjoy doing this. Um will I continue um to do it in this capacity for a super long time? I don't know. Um my term is four years, so I will absolutely um fo- fulfill that. Um and uh in a couple of years, uh when I, if I ask you guys to to sign my petition, we'll think about, we'll think about this conversation and uh talk about that then.
Alright.
And I, yeah, Dee, did you have something to say? I thought you were.
Um, you know, I just had a simple question, question. Um being as though you are the youngest uh member, do you feel like you have trouble connecting to the other people on the board?
Um.
I said.
So, Warner. So, so. So I think, I think one of the cool things um is, is everybody, um so, so Dr. Mumin is not a voting member of the board, obviously, because that's just how this is structured, but he he is free to like throw his two cents in whenever he feels like it. Um so he does, he does interject quite often. Um and and the reason I'm saying that is because um he really, he really kind of sets the tone, him and the president of the board kind of set the tone for how the meeting is gonna go. Um and so uh he says things like, this dude has a degree from Penn, but he calls me Mr. Deadline. Like it, like there is, there is a inherent amount of respect between folks. Um whereas like I look at him and I'm like, wow, you're incredible, like. Do you even know like what you ever overcame to this position? Because like, I read about you and I'm just in awe. Um and so, so I think, I think Dr. Mumin sets a really good tone. Um I think sometimes uh people, especially over the, uh over the the last month, because everything has been contentious over the last month, just inherently, because we're, we're dealing with some very serious issues. And people are gonna disagree on how those issues should go. And that's the whole reason you have a board, um is because people should not always agree. Um or or why have a board. Um so I think in those situations, we've, we've um I have to find my way to to kind of say what I'm thinking um and and not come off as abrasive. Um but at the same time, I don't want to sit there and keep something in my mind um that I think will contribute to the conversation, just because um I think somebody might not agree with it or might think um it's silly or or something like that. So um tha- that goes back to like the intimidation piece, um is that I I'm working with a lot of professionals who have been in the, who have either been in this industry or other industries for my entire lifetime. Um and so trying to, who have sat on different boards and and things like that. So trying to, you 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 just gotta, you just gotta, it's kind of like you choose your battles. Um when, when you're gonna speak up and when you're not. Um I don't want to, uh I have a lot of questions. I'm a naturally inquisitive person. Um and so sometimes that's not conducive to um to what we're trying to accomplish, but I don't let like if the meeting has to go half an hour because I have a couple of questions, or go an extra half an hour because I have a couple of questions, the meeting is gonna go an extra half an hour. Because I, I'm in this, this position because I, the voters trusted me to advocate for their needs. And if I have to ask a couple of questions to figure out how to do that, then then that's what I'm gonna do. Um so I hope, I hope that kind of answers your question. I'm sorry, you said it was a simple question and I went off.
Nah, that was really dope though. And I think um just before we end up, end off this conversation, um my, I think for everybody, get your last questions out. Uh my last question is really going back to that piece of like, I know sometimes like offline and the messages, me, you and Tyler kind of talk about like, all right, what does this actually look like? To inspire other people to get involved, blah, 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 blah. Uh but my thing is going back to those who are interested but want to help but might not be on the board, right? So what are different avenues of communication to kind of like streamline this information and what that looks like? Are there public things? Uh but then also, what are other ways to help? So in theory, like Dear Reading could have like a section where they just do the high level points that the board went over to do, like in their meeting or whatever, right? Um what are other ways for people to still be involved with the school board or help as like almost like an auxiliary to kind of get the voice of the people out there too? If, I hope that question makes sense?
No, yeah, I think it does. Um and I think, I, so, so uh a- and I think a lot of it goes back to access. Um and so uh o- one of the things, a- a- and I talk about this often, in in Berks County, um uh our commissioners have meetings at ten AM on a Thursday. I'm never, ever going to make it to a Berks County commissioner meeting because they're at ten AM on a Thurs- like, who thought that was, like, these guys get paid to do this. This is their job. They could do it whenever they want, but they choose to do it at ten AM on a Thursday. Whereas us, so like our meetings are at nighttime. Um I think one of the benefits of of what we run into with um with uh, I don't want to say benefit. One of the silver linings of what we've run into with this COVID, with this COVID stuff is that we've been forced to go virtual. Um so now we know that we have the capability to do that. Um so I think one of the things that we could end up doing um is live streaming all of our meetings. Um there, there's no reason not to. Um and and so that could be something very easily um uh put out there, very little work. Um I think one of the other benefits um for the district is that um our communications department um is solid. Uh so Krista Boyd Edwards is um always receptive. Is always receptive to to people kind of um giving her, throwing ideas at her. Um she follows up with those ideas. Um she's very accessible. Um and so I think um kind of posing, posing different questions to her, seeing how we can, we can access different things. Um whether, whether, I I mean, what this has to do with some Instagram or Twitter or or things like that. I mean, really, really, the the largest, the largest presence that the district has is, is, I would assume, or don't quote me on this, but I would assume most of what we do is on Facebook. Uh because, I mean, parents, parents are on Facebook. Um but uh if we're trying to target, if we want to target younger demographics, um Facebook's probably not the best place for us to be focusing all of our attention. So um just, it's just figuring out ways um to to navigate that, um I think will be um, will be beneficial. If we could produce like, I don't know, maybe we could figure out a way to like produce like one cheaters, but just say like, this is what happened. Um and and figure out ways to blast that out, um things like that. Um because, I mean, what you end up having in these board meetings is a lot, a lot, a lot of talk to say that, that we approved X amount of dollars to purchase something. So like, it 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 doesn't, um uh the amount of conversations doesn't always amount to the gravity of the situation. We could talk a lot about something and it'd be a very minimal thing. Um so you can't expect people to to tune in to something that little, um or or that doesn't really have anything to do with them uh if, if in those situations, so.
Yeah, right. I I know a lot of people have always, I've mentioned this, but definitely, you know, doing the one cheater and I think if you guys are able to, because do you got, you're recording the live streams now. Have you guys been recording meetings prior though?
I don't, I don't think so.
Think so, yeah. Doing like a now this version of the school board member uh meeting. Here it is. It, it's gonna be closed captions. People can kind of scroll by, see what they need to, go on with their life. It's definitely less intimidating than seeing like a hour and a half meeting that you have, like, you're out. It's not timestamped. You, you're trying to figure out when someone's talked about. So making it more digestible for for this age is definitely gonna be the best way to, to gain that interaction.
I agree. Um, cool. Do we have any other questions for Mark before we head out? Alright.
Let me just tell it real quick, because I know, I know we didn't talk about it, um but I want to make sure that it's out there and I want to make sure that your listeners hear it. I just want to throw a couple of numbers at you real quick.
Oh, yeah, no, that was definitely about to be my thing where I was like, Mark, say anything else that you know you need us to know. You said the Fair Funding Act, you said what?
Yeah, yeah, I want to talk a little bit about fair funding. Um uh it's, uh so depending on who you talk to, depending on which organization you're talking to, um the Reading School District is definitely one of the least underfunded, if not the most underfunded district in the state. Um if you talk to some uh economists and some uh some organizations, they'll tell you that the Reading School District is among the most underfunded in the country. Um there are some estimates that the Reading School District is underfunded in the amount of a hundred million dollars. If, if the district had an extra hundred million dollars, like you can't even fathom the things that we'd be able to accomplish. And I mean, I know, I know that that money is not everything, um when it comes to, I mean, you have to be able to utilize those funds, but I mean, a hundred million dollars is a hundred million dollars. I mean, like, I don't know how to conceptualize a hundred million dollars. Um if we had an extra hundred million dollars, I mean, we would have so far few, so fewer issues. Um one of the other things that I want to just make sure that I throw out there is that, so there's this new fair funding model that came into play in some twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, something like that. The idea behind the model is that the money gets distributed a little more equitably, which there, there's a lot of different methodologies that make that happen. The problem is that the fair funding model only applies to new money added to the state's education budget. So districts can't make, so there are districts that are overfunded and there are districts that are underfunded in the state of Pennsylvania. The districts that are overfunded can't get any less money than they've gotten because of of hold harmless. So the whole idea behind hold, behind hold harmless is that these districts aren't gonna be held accountable for benefiting and then be expected to go backwards. So what that, what that turns into, I I even pulled it up so that I could, so that I could throw it, throw it out to you with, with numbers. So Governor Tom Wills' proposed two thousand nineteen twenty budget included a basic education funding appropriation of six point five billion, okay? The, that includes seven hundred four million in new dollars. So the seven hundred million, those are the dollars that go through the new fund, for, fair funding formula. So that's about eleven percent of the, the budget. Of the fair, of the state education budget. So eleven percent of those funds go through and get distributed in a more equitable, equitable way. So there are five hundred districts in uh the state of Pennsylvania. Um and so the, the estimates are that to make sure every district is on par with what they should be getting funded, this is gonna take about thirty years to catch up. Thirty, three, zero.
Crazy.
So.
Wow, we're not gonna see nothing until we're fifty-six?
Yeah, so there, there need to be, there need to be advocates out there. Um and 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 that's one of the pieces I'm most interested in and 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 why, why I'm glad to have had a couple of conversations with Dr. Mumin about this. It's like, look, we need to be, he, he's always out there. He's, he's at the state level screaming at the top of his lungs like, you are failing our kids. We need more money, give it to us. Um I think there needs to be a cohesive, um you, you, you see superintendents coming together and talking about these things. You rarely see boards coming together and talking about these things. So Reading School District needs to, uh as a board, we need to, we need to interact with Allentown. We need to interact with Lancaster. We need to interact with Bethlehem, um York, um some of your more underfunded districts. And say like, look, how do we, how do we band together and go to the state level and say, look, you're failing our children immensely. Um the, the inequities are just, I, I mean, you, you, you can't even, you can't even put into words how many different things you end up seeing um in regards to inequity. And I mean, this coronavirus um has just exacerbated that uh immensely. Um we're talking about students who are in AP courses. So I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go down, I don't wanna go down that road. AP courses are inherently, um inherently uh biased towards uh your, your more affluent school district. Now we're talking about, so students this year are gonna take AP tests online. How, how you take an AP test online if you don't have internet? You don't, you can't have, like, there, there are so many problems. There, there are students in different countries that take AP, they're all gonna happen at the same time. So like, there are some students in India that are gonna take AP courses at two in the morning, like, it's, that's. Don't get me started on college.
Cause I know that shit will go deep.
It just feels like for some of us, you know, and from what you're saying, it's, it's like, this has, has this, well, I'll, I'll phrase this differently. Has this um shown you, like, uh, uh, from what you've said earlier, you know, it seems like cer- certain things like um school board meetings and, and like cer- certain things you have found, um I would say the Co- the COVID virus has brought, um you know, some pros and cons, a, a lot of cons. Um a lot, a lot of cons to it, but there are some pros in this too. And I think that um with, with that said, um we need to have you on the show again so that we could highlight, you know, if you would like to come on the show, ju- you know, another, I guess, three, four months, just to see how this has impacted our, our students still. And if you have any of those like links. Cause I, I follow you on Facebook and I see that you uh had, had put something about, um was it the SATs? Was, was I talking with you about the, the SATs and how that would, how that would work too for our students?
Probably, at College Board as well.
Have any links? Yeah, please feel free to like, you know, shoot them to Dear Reading because it, it's a lot, it is a lot. And I think, well, I want to just thank you, yeah, it, you know, the work that you do. It, a lot of times is, goes unnoticed. And if, if it wasn't for you, you know.
It goes unnoticed until shit goes wrong, then everybody notices. Crying, she really disappeared for a little bit.
I, I appreciate that, Bree. Um yeah, I mean, there, there, there are so many conversations that we could have. Um uh I, there, there are a lot of things that I could tell you that would probably surprise you. Um and so that's, that's another thing, just getting this information out to people. Um but yeah, COVID, I mean, it has, it has shown inequities. And in, in times of crisis, that's a, that's the time when, when we need to be prepared to hit. Um in times of crisis, that's, that's when things change. Um so uh, I mean, I think, I think Co- the effects of COVID will have lifetime influence on the way education is gonna go um in the state and in the country. Um but, yeah, we need to, we need to, we need to hit, we need to hit hard and we need to do it soon.
Right. Alright. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for this interview. This draw was fire. I might break it up into two parts, um just so we can have like a dedicated time where we can just say, hey, focus on this particular thing. Um just because I think it's an important conversation to have, like, we could talk about like, the first half of the episode, that's fun and we can critique that, but this part, this is shit that really impacts our city. Uh so really just getting people to focus in on like stuff that you were talking about, because I think those numbers are important. Um understanding how people can get involved differently, but also like understanding how other districts are also operating too. Um because we always had to understand, like, it's still, like, Reading still has a unique experience, because we're not even talking about like what happens to like the undocumented population in a time like this and all that other stuff. So that's another conversation. Look, cause I'll, I'll get into it. But definitely, definitely, please leave us with a bunch of links if you have any resources you want us to share. Please let us know. We're also just another avenue to get this information out. So we just wanna make sure we're also contributing, even if it's from like a podcast media perspective. Here's just another intro into what the school board does. But yeah, no, just singing praises. Once again, thank you for the work that you do.
Appreciate you guys. Thanks for having me.
Oh, don't worry. We got just one last segment. So we just moving right smooth into the Dear Reading segment. And this is where we have our open love letter to the city. So Mark, you will be going last in this moment. So does anybody wanna start off with a love letter to the city? Go ahead, Bree.
Dear Reading, love thy neighbor. Come, everyone come to the, come to the front of the, of the, dang, hasn't been that long since I've been in church? Alright, well, listen.
Your church record, just like your record to be in a vegan, but go ahead, go. I'm just kidding. We didn't have to get, I didn't have a joke for you this whole time. I love you.
Joking, he wasn't joking.
Dear Reading, oh, social distancing guidelines, please. That's it.
I love you, Bree. I'm crying. Look, um, Dear Reading. Think about now, think about the long game too. I think Mark brought up a really good point of seeing like, we might not see this change in the next thirty years. Until the next thirty years. So just understand that you might not have your impact right away that you would like to see. But just keep reminding yourself that sometimes change doesn't happen overnight. Change happens over a course of some years. So think beyond yourself. That's mine.
Dear Reading, I know it's kind of hard right now and times are hard, but if you can try to look out for one another, because this is the time where we need it most.
Yeah, Dear Reading. Take care of yourself. I think, you know, this is a very weird time to be in and it can be draining and stressful. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot out there telling you to be creative, to be. Proactive, productive and everything like that, but I say this all the time, the most important person, when you wake up and go to bed is yourself. If you can't take care of yourself, you can't take care of anybody else. So take care of yourself and then take care of others.
Dear Reading, just know that I'm I'm available and I am, I'm ready to to encourage folks in any way that I can. We we're all in this together. I mean, we are, we are one city and and if we get together in the way that I know we can. We're gonna turn this place into an amazing place to live. So just just know that I'm I'm available to reach out to if you have any questions, if you need any follow up of anything that we talk to. Obviously, I like to talk as evident from how long, how long this interview went. So feel free to reach out and and let me echo what everybody else said. Take care of yourself, stay inside, stay healthy, take care.
Any church announcements? Anybody got anything coming up? Should we look out for new blogs, new videos, new content, new episodes, anything?
You know, every Thursday, Alternative Blacks goes live on Instagram at Alternative Blacks Pod. So if you, if you're bored on a Thursday at seven PM Eastern Time, that's that's where you can catch us.
Which topic this week?
It's a great question.
I just wanna touch base on, and Mark, you probably know more than me on this, is the mail in ballot. You know, now that COVID nineteen is here, we are allowed to mail in our ballots. But you have to request that online. There is a certain timeframe that you guys have to request it, your mail in ballot, please. Marquis, if I can get, can I send you like?
Send me all the details. We'll put it in the description box below. We'll make sure to put it, spread it across all social media platforms. Anybody else? They're really blessed, Mariah Carey upstairs. And I guess my last church announcement, no, I'll be going live for This American Negro on Tuesday night. So we'll be talking about the state of journalism during COVID nineteen. So I'm super excited about that one. And then on Friday, please catch me on Zoom. I was invited to have a conversation on Black as Fuck. But also what colorism looks like in America and how we can kind of combat that. Saturday, I'll be going live with Will Tom from Rec Philly, talking about an update on different projects happening. And different plans that we have going on too. So it's a cool week in terms of stuff. And then look out for the following week. I'll be featured on the Agape Files podcast by Iona Cameron. So that's cool. We got a really good conversation going. Self-care, but also what it means to be a black creative in today's day.
Yeah, we just got something new for like every day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been a busy, it's been a busy, next week's busy. It's back to kind of busy key stuff. Anybody else? Marie, just let us know when you hit us with more travel tips. We miss you.
I'm waiting for packages in the mail.
Look, that part. Alright, once again, thank you, Mark, for having this conversation. Thank you, Tyler, for adding perspective for our Black as Fuck conversation just overall. The new guy, thank you for handling. For coming back with us. And thank you to all of the listeners. Once again, we appreciate y'all interacting and still rocking with Dear Reading, cause it's gonna be two years in July. So that anniversary is coming up, which is wild. But yeah, thank you and we will see y'all next week.
Appreciate you guys. Thanks for having me.
See ya.